Call and meeting to order is the common council meeting of Tuesday, August 18th. Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Here.
Bukiewicz.
Here.
Verhaelen.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Item three is the approval of minutes of August 3rd, 2015.
Bukiewicz will make a motion to approve the minutes of 8:315 as listed. Kerkowski, second.
Kerkowski, seconds. Is that what you had?
Aye, Guzy.
Yep.
Yep.
Uh, Guzekowski, rather, thank you. Um, roll call.
Alderman Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Herkowski.
Aye. Item four is a public hearing on a official map amendment requested by Lily Drive Developments to amend the official map for a portion, 24,795 square feet of the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 16, mapped unimproved right-of-way between South Lori Lane and South Alyssa Lane in the first district. City clerk will read the, uh, deputy city clerk will read the, uh, public hearing notice.
Public hearing number one is to consider a post-proposal by Lily Drive Developments to amend the official map for a portion of the southwest one quarter of the northwest one quarter of Section 16, 24,795 square feet, between South Laurale, Laurale Lane and South Alyssa Lane. The date of the notice is July 16th, 2015.
Thank you.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the director of community development for the city of Oak Creek, and this is a public hearing on a request to amend the official map for the northwest quarter of Section 16, between Lori Lane and Alyssa Lane. Lily Drive Development is in the process of dividing these properties at 8821 South Lori Lane, and you can kind of see that, uh, and I'm actually going to pull up a Google Earth image that gives you a better idea of the area that we're dealing with here. Uh, they're developing then a new series of single-family residential lots, as well as stormwater infrastructure to serve not only their subdivision or their portion of the subdivision, but the entire neighborhood. A CSM, as well as a preliminary subdivision plot have already been reviewed and approved by the planning commission. This request would amend the official map to remove an officially-mapped street between those two streets, and you can kind of see those even on the air photo, and this is a recent air photo. The official map shows a connection going through on Lily Drive between these two, whereas right now, uh, these two streets dead-end with a gravel connection here. Uh, the proposal would officially de-map this, so there would be no permanent connection. You'd still have a permanent connection here, as well as a temporary connection, a gravel connection here. And you can see that a little bit better, and so the area which is shaded in red on the screen graphic is the area that is proposed to be de-mapped. Now, when you are proposing the amendment to the official map, there are a couple of things that you need to consider. Uh, one of those is the impact that had, that has on the adjacent or surrounding properties' ability to develop their properties. And certainly, as part of this, uh, this would, uh, make it more difficult for the owner of the property itself to develop the property if they were interested. However, in, in looking at this and throughout the history of the project, there have been attempts to, uh, by the developer to work with those property owners to develop that, and at least it was their understanding, and they've expressed to us that there's been no indication that that landowner wants to develop that. So, they're proposing to eliminate that section of the officially-mapped street, and just making Alyssa Lane connection to Lily Drive as a permanent road, and the Glenfield Drive connection to Lori would remain a, essentially, an emergency access road. Thus, all part, all points of the subdivision would have two points, at least two points of access, and, and whether it's emergency access or permanent access. The planning commission has reviewed this proposed official map amendment. They have recommended to you that it is, uh, that be approved after a public hearing, and that is where we are at the public hearing stage. So I would ask that anyone in the audience who has any questions or comments regarding the proposal to amend the official map for Section 16, as indicated, to please approach the microphone, give your name and address, and proceed to address your comments or questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
I'll make three calls for public comment. First call.
Art and Dignor, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. I've seen this previously, and there's a couple of questions here. First of all, I heard that the sewer and water utility wanted this looped on the water main so it wouldn't have stagnant water. How has that been resolved?
If you have knowledge, you have to come up and identify yourself.
My name is Calvin Kleimick with Pioneer Engineering. W-3902 Highway B, Johnson Creek. I'm the design engineer for Mr. Mark and Midwest, or Lily Creek Development. To answer your question, sir, there, starting here, we have a water main loop that goes from here up to there, and we have a water main loop that comes all the way over to here, which also connects up. So, our water main is fully connected to all streets per the requirements of the, um, utility board, and sanitary sewer starts here and comes all the way, and also going up both of those, so...
Why don't you grab, why don't you grab Doug's pointer, because I don't think yours is working. I can't see it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's a pen.
Yeah, you can use the device, turn it around.
Okay.
Press.
Get smart, you know. So there's this full sanitary sewer, it starts here, comes over to Glenfield, and then relieves Lori Lane and Alyssa, and also, that same route has full water main per the requirements of the public utility board.
Okay, thanks for that information.
Thank you. It seems unusual, though, that you have a water main and sewer in place in this mapped street, and are you going to de-map the street? I thought the purpose of, of these maps, and the street map, was to guide development in the future, and I, I just failed to see it.
Doug, want to take a crack at that one?
Well, I guess I'm not sure where the question was there, but, I mean, the city does maintain official maps in order to guide future development decisions, and to the extent that a property owner has the ability to petition the city to amend those official maps, they, they certainly have the ability and the right to do that. It's not uncommon, I would say, to have public utilities and easements, whether they're outside of right-of-way, and in some cases, uh, there, there are, there's public infrastructure which is totally outside the right-of-way, so, well, it's not, I guess, the preferred method of doing business. I think that is certainly not uncommon to have, uh, infrastructure remain after a street is de-mapped or even vacated.
Okay. Thanks for your question, Mr. Dignor. Second call for public comment.
Darren Grabowski, 9858 South Deer Path Drive, Oak Creek.
Doug, can I use your pointer?
Oh, yeah.
Just turn it.
Yeah.
I got you, I got you, I got you. Okay, I'm first time here with this map here. I'm just a resident on the other side of town, but I see there's a gravel driveway right here. They're saying this is going to still be gravel. I noticed this property owner right here owns all this right here, so they're going to try to de-map this. Now, the people that live over here, I think we owe it to them to complete this into a road that goes through, and complete this. This is just me as a resident thinking. I don't want to, you know, do anything against anyone here, but it just makes sense, because in some day, this gentleman here will end up selling this to someone, or someone or the developer right here. It just makes sense to complete all this. That's just me personally, to put that road in right there, since the water and sewer's there, and then to complete that right there. And this property owner right here would probably be taxed on his back road here, since it is his property. Just a statement.
Thanks for your comments. Third call for public comment on item four. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public hearing and move to item five, which is a discussion of ordinance number 2771, amending Section 6.01 of the municipal code relating to a change in the official map for Section 16. Open it up to the council for questions or comments. Alderman Bukiewicz.
Um, this did come through planning, and we did discuss it. Uh, one concern was the fire department. Fire department would like to see that connection at some point in time, uh, but of course, at this time, it's, it's just map, it does not exist. Really, the question came in about future development and what happens with it, and who pays for the road. At this point in time, though, all parties at planning really didn't have a lot of heartburn over this whole deal, so, um, planning approved it as, as is, and that was the recommendation that stood. Uh, again, it would probably come down to cost, and just because it's not mapped now, and Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't mean that that person off of East Forest Hill who owns that back section couldn't petition to get that in at some point in time if he so chose.
You, you could do that, although certainly it would be much, much more difficult to do that if the, to put a map, a street back on the map than it would be to take it off.
Especially if it's not on your plan.
Dan, you mind if I elaborate on the fire's position?
No, go right ahead.
Um, one of the things, and if you're not familiar with the design manual, over the years, on cul-de-sacs and dead ends, the number of lots, which is 15, which all of these meet, is sufficient, so legally, yeah, if you want to do this, yes, but there's two things that concern is, number one, we have enough obstacles in the city via railroad tracks, the expressway, we have enough cul-de-sacs and dead ends in the city, why do you want to create more when you don't have to? The second part of this is, what is the, we're talking about bringing in and bringing our tax base up, what is the implications of this if you do this, and what does it cost the city in the long run in potential tax dollars? Because we're all worried about that, because the state is cutting, all of a sudden, now you have a taxes on property somewhere that didn't need to be. So, and, and the third thing of this is the analysis is not only the fire issue, but school buses. Can they get through, and all this other stuff that is, where are these kids walking to? Is the bus stop out, you know, all of a sudden, you decide to put it on Howell Avenue? Not too often, but I know the Gables is, is one of those bus stops on Howell Avenue, where the kids walk to. So that's just another analysis to take a look at in this whole scheme of things.
Okay. Alderman Guzekowski.
Alderman Bukowitz, uh, mentioned, brought everything up from planning commission, so thanks.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Then...
Alderman Kerkowski.
This might be, Ted might have to answer some of these questions, maybe Mike Simmons too, but I noticed that right next to 300 East Forest Hill Avenue, there's that drainage ditch. That has been, you know, separate issues, problems, over the years, and I, as that drainage ditch goes north, does it not turn, or is there not some sort of drainage issue on the, the north side of those three property owners there? I mean, I, I recall going out there, yeah, right, the drainage ditch, and then it kind of hangs a left turn right down there by the trees. I understand that when I was out there before, it kind of looked like, kind of rugged property anyways, is, now, if we vacate that, I mean, so that drainage area exists, and maybe the property owners like the fact that that's a barrier between their property and the development, um, they vacate that piece of property. Ted, do you guys plow right now through those, that gravel area?
We do, uh...
Ted.
I'm sorry, that's your, if you could...
I've got to speak on the mic.
Uh, we do go down and we do clean out that area that is currently gravel, so that the fire trucks can turn around, and actually, the, the mail trucks turn through there and that. I believe that one square is a pond. I don't know if you can actually put that road straight through there anymore, but you would be able to connect both of the roads, um, would be able, yeah, right like that, and the other one is being connected, so...
I think that was the thought pattern about why they put the pond where it was. One, you improve the stormwater for the, the existing neighborhoods, and then the new neighborhood as well, but now you have two loops for...
Right. And, I mean, we were, we were plowing through that as it was gravel before, and, and we were doing the connection road. Now we'll just do the two loops. So the traffic will still be able to get through there.
Eventually, the, uh, if it's de-mapped, whatever maintenance is done on that area would just, nothing would be done. It'd be, be overgrown, and the grass would grow, and eventually, you, you wouldn't see anything there, right? Which would resemble an old piece of gravelled road?
Uh, I mean, somebody still owns that, um, so I, I would imagine it would get mowed.
Okay. Well, I'm just concerned, I mean, we're going to potentially de-map a road, I mean, our signs, I mean, our barriers are going to be put up so people know they, they can't go straight through, I mean, what's it going to look like?
Well, the road, the road that's going in right now will have curb and gutter on it.
Okay.
And so, um, the one that's left, uh, um, that's gravel right now, won't have curb and gutter, but it doesn't right now anyway.
Right, okay.
It just kind of ends at the, um, I, actually, we hope that eventually, that other piece will be curb and gutter and, and pavement as well. It's a lot more difficult to plow and, and keep that open for emergency vehicles and that, when it's gravel than it would be, uh, for a paved road.
All right. Yeah. I'm not excited about, uh, losing a, a mapped street, even if it's in a dirt condition because of potential development, but, uh, but thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the, what you see, you're not losing a, a dirt road currently. It doesn't, there, there's no...
There was before, Ken.
Before they put the pond in.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, because right now, you can't...
There was a dirt road previously.
Yeah.
The pond now eliminated that connection.
Okay.
Now, people will still be able to go across there, kids or whoever, I mean, it's just a natural area.
Okay. Thank you, I think...
Mr. Simmons?
Just the, uh, on the related, uh, project that, uh, really, we had hoped would, would happen, uh, in conjunction with the, the construction that is now wrapping up, because this road is completed. Uh, sidewalks are in, the pond is, is completed, but in the process of, of this development being designed, um, meetings with the city, um, the city is working with this property owner for, to acquire this piece of property, which would be, um, yet another detention basin, which would, um, take the drainage from, uh, this area, uh, which currently does make its way, uh, in this direction, but not very well. Kind of an undefined ditch, um, not, not well-maintained, uh, not well-designed. It, it actually is somewhat backpitched and has to surcharge before it flows. Um, so that, that's part of the problem here, but at any rate, there's, there is a larger project that is currently in design, um, trying to acquire, acquire this parcel, which would be a pond, again, connected to this pond, and then, um, an improved drainage system that would discharge and be piped along this ditch. This is that kind of unattractive ditch, um, and, and connecting, um, under Forest Hill, and, and basically reconstructing a, a failing culvert that's in this location. So that is all in the works currently. Right, and, and that is through the, funded through the stormwater fund and, and a stormwater project that's been, you know, somewhat ongoing, um, slow-moving, and yet, moving forward, we would, we would hope that that would take place, um, in 2016.
Okay, that alleviates any concerns, thank you.
Right, and then we should, we should see an improved, the terrain should be greatly improved through here.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman, thank you. Alderman Verhaelen.
Uh, just a, kind of a backup question to Alderman Bukiewicz's question, um, about possibly leaving that, that road connection in there. I don't know, from what I can see, it, there's, you're, if the, if that road is, is taken off the map, and, I don't know, can it ever be constructed, being that the ponds are there, or is it, there's not enough room for the right-of-way anymore, or what's the reason?
I, I don't believe that there's, there's the space to, to, to get that road through there, and, and I don't, and this intersection would have to be completely reconstructed to, to, to make that a viable intersection, so, you know, I, I guess someday I could see this being completed, this loop, and then, of course, this loop is now completed, but not connected, uh, at this location.
So, so in essence, all of that, all of that green space that appears to the south of that, of the two loops there, that thing, for all intents and purposes, is going to be a dead zone?
Doug, would you go back to the other screen? I, I think that this property could even, uh, potentially front on, onto this road if, if awareness is improved, so this is, you know, this property owner, I, I guess this would be, have to be a larger lot to have the adequate frontage to access that road.
The reason I ask is because if we're in a cul-de-sac situation, and you try to extend that road further to the south, you, you really can't, because you get too many homes on it. So, for all, and, and to make another connection on Howell Avenue so close to Forest Hill, it probably wouldn't be feasible to do that either, so, um, the only way you could maybe make it work is if that, the person that owned all of that property, uh, if they sold to a developer, they'd have to tear that house down and run a road straight to the north to get any development out of, at all out of that thing, the way I see it. That would be pretty much a correct statement, wouldn't, wouldn't you agree, or?
If you were talking, um, Alderman Verhaelen, uh, that a road through here?
That would be the only way you could make it work. Now, well, I mean, my, 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 my statement was that you could maybe run something out to Howell Avenue, but being that it's so close to the intersection of Forest Hill, I don't know if it would work.
Essentially, how this, how this property would be served is if the, if Lori Lane and Glenfield Drive connection is made, and I guess, I'll, I'll at least bring it up to the council that, I mean, uh, if we proceed along the path we're going down, that will remain gravel, and just stating the facts, the prospects for that ever being completed and paved, uh, are diminished by the action that you take this evening. Just given the fact that there's, there's no real economical way of paying for those improvements by dividing that, that further land, because certainly, you have a detention pond here and a detention pond here, so whoever would divide these lots now has to cover the cost of that roadway. Not saying it's not, not possible, it is, but, I mean, that's how those lots would be served, probably, and just eyeballing it, probably four lots off of the Glenfield-Lori connection here. I don't think there'd be a need to come off of Forest Hill or Howell Avenue, you could do it off of this connection.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir?
In addition to what Mr. Doug just said, this section over here, which would not be a lot, but this is going to be an outlot for additional stormwater management, um, and so, from about here, all the way over to there, would be lots that could be divided, because the right-of-way is still right there, um, all the way through, and the improvements would have to be made, um, and we've been asking to do those improvements for the last 20 years.
Thank you. Alderman Bukiewicz.
Um, I was just going to elaborate on that, if, if there were a possibility to develop off that, that bottom loop, where before you hit the stone, you went with shared driveways, and you managed to get three homes in there, and somebody had a shared driveway, you would still have access, and I'm talking to the farther, the two farther east lots off the circle, and then maybe just one before the, the gravel, but, um, we pretty much exhausted that, that conversation, but I, I think there would be creative ways to do it if, if need be, there was the interest.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Ken. Is your button working?
Um, I don't know.
Please, there you go, thank you.
Doug, do you know, like, underneath the bubble there, the, the commentary bubble that's there, are, are those two lots developable currently?
Are you referring to the back portions of those?
The backside of those existing homes.
Uh, those depths look a little short, but, I mean, I, I think theoretically, yes, those, those could be developable.
And we didn't hear from either one of those individuals in this process?
Uh, we have not, to my knowledge, there are no comments at the planning commission meeting, nor at the public hearing, but everyone was notified.
Okay. And Doug, what, um, if you remove an officially-mapped street from the comprehensive plan or the overlay plan, what, what are the costs to whomever chooses to try and put it back on, or they'd have to go through new surveying, new engineering?
No, because right now, it's, it's just shown as, as an official map, it's just a line on a map.
Yep.
So, I mean, there's administrative costs, I think it's $875, something of that nature, requiring a public hearing. I mean, the more, obviously, the, the greater cost would be to design and implement the infrastructure to service those lots, and to acquire right-of-way.
Mike, did, did I hear you say that the, the existing, the new stormwater pond there potentially encroaches on a, potentially finishing that road or not?
Um, perhaps Calvin can, Calvin, can you elaborate on that? I believe that the sideslope of that pond, that south sideslope of, of the, of the new pond, uh, does encroach on where that roadway had gone through.
Yes, yes, it does.
You've got to speak on the mic, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No problem. I'll make sure everybody can hear you.
Yes, the, there's an emergency... They don't like my pointer, so... And I came prepared tonight. There's an emergency outflow right about there, um, which would have been in where the old gravel was, um, and then the sideslope that goes down to the existing ditch, which is right in here, would, would not permit, um, um, the, the roadway to go through, and part of the problem that we had from the original design is that we tried to take and follow the official map that came like this and squared that off, and, and right here, we would have needed to go to, um, Mark, I forget his last name, um, which he was supposed to be here tonight, um, but he's that property owner that's right here, um, without encroaching onto his property, and we did not really want to encroach on his property to construct the road, and, and that's why we had to take and put the curve in, um, in, in order to physically build what we have.
And those landowners did not wish to be part of your developmental plan?
Um, Larry right here...
I'm talking to these folks.
And Mark right here, were supposed to be here in support of this public hearing. I'm not sure, I, I stopped by them on Saturday when I was out surveying, and they weren't there, so they may be on vacation, I, I don't know, but, but Mark would like, you know, there, um, and, and then to get the extra 10 feet that was previously dedicated, um, as part of the right-of-way, and he has, he's in favor of that. I'm not sure about this gentleman right there. I've, I've, I haven't spoken to him.
Okay, let's not speculate on that. So, real quick, what you are doing with your new connection is adding how many lots for sale after this is done?
Totally for the whole...
We'll have 11 or 12.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
And that was a CSM and everything that was already approved.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing non-motion on five.
Kerkowski will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2771, amending Section 6.01 of the municipal code relating to a change in the official map for Section 16.
Gale, second.
Gale, seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Herkowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Moving to new business, we're going to take item eight first. It's a consideration of resolution number 11641-081815, accepting the 2014 financial statement and auditor's report as prepared and presented by Baker Tilly Verkhau Kraus, LLP, by committee of the whole, and we have a representative of that organization here to do a short presentation.
I'm going to just give a really brief intro here for Steve Henke, who's here from Baker Tilly. We had a very good year in 2014. The general fund ended with 397,000 in surplus. Based on our three-year financial plan, we did an internal transfer of that surplus from the general fund and applied it to the deficit in the EMS fund. So when we go through the presentation with Steve, you will see that the general fund is at a net revenues and expenditures totaling the same amount, and the fund balance has not changed, because we followed our procedure with our three-year financial plan. So with that, I will let Steve go through the handout that we gave out tonight.
Uh, good evening. A pleasure to be here. Uh, my name is Stephen Henke. I'm a senior manager with Baker Tilly, and I'll be walking through each... I'm a senior manager with Baker Tilly, and I'll be walking through each that have received this little seven-page handout. We'll run through that and be available if you have questions. We were engaged to audit your 2014 financial statements and express our opinion. We have done that. We have, on pages, little i to three i, issued an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. In layman's terms, it's a clean opinion. It's what you want to hear from us as your auditors. You know, those three pages are the only pages in that document that are ours as your auditors. All the other financial information is a responsibility of management and the city. The financial document is about 80 pages long, so we'll, we'll use this little short handout here and go from there. We did issue a, a second document. It's a communication letter, kind of a management letter. I'll add a few comments there when I get through the, the charts and graphs. And then we're also in process, because of the, the dollar amount of federal and state aids that the city received, we're in the process of completing what's referred to as a single audit, which is a compliance audit as it relates to the expenditures of federal and state grants. And because of the activity of several of the TIF districts, we are in a process of conducting the 30% audit of several TIF districts. But moving to page one, this is a snapshot of your general fund's fund balance. And as Bridget mentioned, the, the balance at the end of 13 and 14 is the same, although the components of the, the balance is a little bit different there. The non-spendable portion decreased partly because of the transfer to the EMS fund. And then your unassigned went up from 4.4 million to 5.1. And a couple of comments on that. But again, just kind of looking at it from a picture to, to see what the, the makeup there is. As I mentioned, your unassigned fund balance is about 5.1 million. When I come to these meetings, a lot of the questions are centered around how, how is our balance and how does it compare? I'll just share a little bit of information with you. You have a fund balance policy that states that your, there's a formula to calculate your available fund balance at the end of the year that was just under 19% of the calculated formula, which basically looks at revenues and shared revenues coming in as a percentage. Your policy range is 15 to 25%. So you're kind of right in the middle of that, that policy. Another way to look at this is strictly looking at unassigned fund balance and, say, comparing it to expenditures. Well, that would be, you're at about 22%. Well, if you look at some of the external percentages, the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends that a community maintains about two months of available dollars to help them manage, you know, two months at a time, so that in a percentage term, that's about 16.7%. So you're on a positive side of that. A big portion of our business is providing audit services to other communities. We try to assemble a range of where community fund balances fall. I, I don't have the number of, the, the number of communities that are polled to relate to this, but four communities of the size of Oak Creek, the low fund balance was about 16%. The high was in the mid 30s, and the, the mean is in that 20, 25 to 27, 28. So, you know, your, your fund balance sits kind of in that middle of the, the range. So from that standpoint, it's healthy. It provides you appropriate working capital to weather the, the state's shared revenue payments when they come in, as well as have some flexibility to deal with unexpected expenditures and/or emergencies. Moving to page two, again, this is a snapshot of the revenue and expenditure activity for the past five years. And, you know, there's a, a little bit of growth in both revenues and expenditures, but certainly not anything to any great degree. As Bridget mentioned, for 14, your excess deficiency netted to zero. And from a budgetary standpoint, you did have a balanced budget, so you weren't anticipating to add or take away from, from your fund balance. On page three, this is just a pie chart of the different expenditure, or different revenues, I should say. From budget standpoint, you, you budgeted just under $21.9 million in revenue. Actual was 21.8 and change, so a shortfall of about $43,000 in revenue. Moving to page four, this is another snapshot of your revenue. And, you know, this is really the, the telltale signs of what's happening with the revenue stream coming into the city. As you look at all four of those different categories of revenue, they're all pretty flat across the five, the five years of information here. Moving on to page five, again, this is a pie chart of the, the expenditures. And, you know, from a, again, from a budgetary standpoint, your operating expenditures, you were looking to spend $24,180,000. Your actual expenditures were $22,950,000. So you were, you were under budget by 1.2 million from an expenditure standpoint, certainly managing the expenditures. Some of the key reasons for that, actual expenditures being less than budget, you didn't really need to tap into your contingency dollars that you had set aside, as well as there were a number of vacant positions across the city. Excuse me. Looking on page six, again, a, just a chart of the last five years of expenditures for the city. And similar to the, the schedule we looked at, or the chart we looked at a couple pages back, pretty flat with the exception of the general government expenditures in 2012. And that was a one-time payment out of accumulated sick leave based on some policy changes there in the city. But otherwise, everything's pretty consistent and flat across the five-year period. Going to the last page of the handout, this is just, again, a snapshot of the debt activity of the city. And we've got a lot of projects that are in the works, a lot of significant projects that are in the works. So certainly not unexpected to see the, the red line in the middle of the chart there. Moving up to the, the right side of the page, you've, you've entered the bond market for a number of issues over the last couple of years to help finance the, the projects that you have going. At the end of 2014, you're got about 40% of available on your, your debt margin, which is probably a little bit lower than many communities. But again, as I was telling management when we were wrapping up the audit, I've been in this business for a lot of years, but the, the number of projects that the city has going on is, you know, quite amazing, all at one point in time. So, you know, there's certainly reasons and explanations, there's a plan in place to, to, to go forward here. And the only other comment that I would make is, like I said, we did issue a second report that was a communication to those charged with governance and management. This document includes any observations as it relates to internal control, operating matters, as well as a number of informational points. I won't spend time going through it. Another section in that report is required communication from me as your auditor. Lifts four pages full of bullet points. I'll summarize those by saying they're normal and customary. And with that, I would also note that we received complete cooperation from management and staff as we conducted our audit. We appreciate that. And with that, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to entertain those.
Questions from the council? Alderman Bukiewicz?
Just for the public that might be watching, just rate the city financial, its financial health, one being the lowest, 10 being the highest, or would you say we sit?
Oh, my gosh. Well, I used the term before. I don't know that I can put it in a numbers thing. I mean, you've, as, as I went through the, the percentages a little bit earlier, your unassigned and available fund balance certainly is within your established policies, and it's above some industry standards. So, you know, when you combine that, I would say you're healthy. If you're going to make me put a number on it, I would probably say in that seven to eight category.
Thank you. I just wanted to demonstrate, I think, I think it's been very well managed by everybody within this building networks on it. I feel the same way.
Okay.
I think we're in very good shape considering everything going on.
Absolutely.
Other questions from the council or residents?
If I just have a quick one, thank you. Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the common council. My name is Timothy Grabowski, and I reside at 9858 South Deer Path Drive. Possibly the auditor could answer this question for me. For the 2014 financial statement and auditor's report, it shows that TIF 8 and TIF 11, it shows that the payment of $19,960 was paid out. What is the total cost that your company has undertaken as far as for this financial statement and auditor's report? We don't have that. When we get to the vendor's report, it shows a portion, but it doesn't show the total. So I don't know if you're able to answer that, or?
We can have the finance director answer.
Finance, or Bridget could.
There are progress payments that were made on the TIF audit. So let's not, I don't want to confuse what we have in front of us right now. What we have in front of us right now is our annual audit, which is under a three-year agreement with Baker Tilly. We went out for RFP last year. If my memory serves me, we are at the $40,000 or $41,000 range, 40, for this year's audit. So that's the annual audit. In addition to that, we have the single audit, which Steve alluded to, the TIF 8, 30%, TIF 11, 30%. Mind you, all three of those are required by state and federal entities for us to do.
Right.
You have to do the TIF audits at 30%, at 100% expenditure of the project plan, and at closure.
Okay. So roughly, are we looking at, Bridget, around $60,000 total?
Including the annual audit?
Mm-hmm.
You're probably 65 to 70, if you would include all.
Okay. And then my other question would be possibly to Krista. The taxpayers, and obviously the people that are here this evening and watching at home, we haven't been able to look at the 2014 financial statement and auditor's report. Is it possible to have the PDF format scanned into the city website?
That is already up on the city website, as well as copies for the public in the city's clerk's office and at the library.
Okay, great. All right. Thanks, Bridget.
Thanks for the questions. Other questions? If none, motion?
Give a move to approve resolution number 11641-081815, accepting the 2014 financial statement and auditor's report as prepared and presented by Baker Tilly Virchow Kraus LLP.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Herkowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Verhelen.
Aye.
Thank you for your work on the audit. Appreciate it. Moving back to six, a consideration of resolution number 11639-081815, approving a storm sewer easement agreement and a right-of-way agreement buy-in between One West Drexel LLC in the city of Oak Creek in the second district. Who's taking that one?
I can do that.
Oh, there you go. See, attorney?
This is part of the development of Drexel Town Square, and as part of that development, HSA is purchasing Lot 11. That is for the construction of a medical facility and a parking garage by Frederick at Drexel Town Square. As part of that development, the city is requiring each a 30-foot storm sewer easement and a 30.5-foot right-of-way agreement over the same lot. So attached with the council report are the easements as drafted, and they will implement this proposal. There's no compensation to HSA, One West Drexel, or Frederick for either of these easements, and these are being granted as part of the CSM approval process. They've already been signed by One West Drexel.
Thank you. Seeing none, motion on six.
Bukiewicz will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11639081815, approving a storm sewer easement agreement and a right-of-way agreement buy-in between One West Drexel LLC in the city of Oak Creek.
Guzekowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Herkowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Verhelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item seven is a motion to approve the summary report in the amount of $2,622,000. Did you have a question on the last one or this?
No, this one, this current one for the vendor.
Let me just finish right there.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Consider a motion to approve the summary report in the amount of $2,622,282.28 by committee of the whole. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. In regards to the vendor summary report, I'm looking at item number five. It's $35,700, and it's for the bus shelters at Drexel Town Square. I would assume that roughly 98% of the city of Oak Creek residents would not use those shelters. It's not a definitive number, but it's just a number that I've looked at. Why is the county not paying for that? And if not the county, why wouldn't the developer, Mr. Frankie, be looking at paying that dollar figure? Was there any discussion as far as with the county?
Go ahead.
On the bus shelters?
There's community support to increase our mass transit presence, particularly at Drexel Town Square. We're also trying to do that at the Oakview Business Park. These costs actually are either going to be paid directly by some of the tenants at DTS. We've got two of the four shelters that have been spoken for. So we've got, Frederick has agreed to pay for one. I'm trying to get him to pay for two. And Meyer has paid for one. And we think that eventually all four of the shelters will be paid by some of the occupants there. If not, the remaining costs will be paid out of the, the TIF district there. So that's the, that's the plan. We do think, I've got our community development department looking at whether we can recognize the donors with something that's not very, it's not a sign. I'm told it can't be a sign under our sign ordinance, but we're looking to recognize that. So there's value in those shelters that's been recognized by some of the tenants there. And we've got at least, right now, two of them spoken for, and I'm trying to get the other, the other two spoken for.
Okay. No, that's, that's great. The other one I had was for item number 25, $129,000, excuse me, $930, and it's for the Department of Natural Resources, the wetland conservation permit. Mike, is that typical to pay that kind of dollar figure for a permit?
I can comment on that. It, it isn't unless you've got to mitigate wetlands. This is part of the 20th Street construction. So this is to serve the, the school property that's on Drexel Avenue. This was something that we worked with RJ Smith to get the permits through the DNR. And this, these are basically mitigation payments for the wetlands that we're going through. So essentially, this is part of the permitting process. And I would say that whenever you're into the wetlands, you need to make these payments. There's a specific dollar amount per acre that's identified. We'll have these same costs at the north bluff stabilization area when we get through, and actually are going to have to deal with some of the wetlands there. So it's a, it's a standard cost that the DNR has when you have to mitigate wetlands.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your questions. Go ahead.
Rosemarion's in 3920 East Ryan Road. My question is, there were four bus shelters?
That's correct.
At roughly $10,000 apiece?
I think they're $8,900, $8,300 each.
Why? What are we talking about for a shelter?
They're, they're, they're bus shelters.
I know, but it's a couple.
They've got actually solar lighting in them. That's what they, that's what they cost.
Thanks for your question. Alderman Bukiewicz?
Just a quick comment, and I guess this is a question for Jerry, because it kind of caught my eye on the 122 for the, the DNR permits. Is the city getting that cost, and then are we sharing it with? Is the city getting that cost and then are we sharing it with the school board and associated parties?
Yes, actually, you're gonna be seeing a, um, a three-way agreement probably at your next council meeting between Northwestern Mutual, the school, and the city in terms of the utilities, as well as the roadway as part of that process. If you remember previously, there were financial commitments from each of those three entities in order to do the project correctly. There's likely gonna be increased cost in the agreement that's been worked out. Tentatively is the city would temporarily fund those increased costs and then when the property to the north, the Northwestern owns the significant properties in there connect and we're expecting that's gonna be soon, we would be reimbursed for that difference. So, originally, there was a $700,000 from Northwestern Mutual. We had 150,000 and the school had 130. So, I don't know, that comes out to 980,000. If the project exceeds that, we temporarily fund that and then get reimbursed. That's an agreement that's coming to you next, um, next council meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kirkowski?
Bridgette and maybe the chief can elaborate a little bit. With regards to item number nine, we're, we're spending $16,000 for replacement of lights and radio systems for the battalion chiefs' cars. One of the line items is $15,000. I was, can you break that down for me, please? What, uh, what is worth $16,000?
That was included in the whole CIP and we're meeting the NFPA standards for, for lighting for the emergency vehicle. And it also included some of the radials installation also.
Uh, was the emerg, or is it? Emergency Lighting and Electronics LLC, they were, was all that put out for bid? Were they the low bidder? I mean, how did we end up, how did we end up with them versus, say, General Fire over on?
Yeah, they're, they're basically the only game in town. In fact, right now, Janesville, West Alice, Mount Horeb are all out there. They're out, it's a company out in Waukesha. They're kinda like the one-stop shop and for emergency vehicles.
General Fire doesn't do that anymore?
To our knowledge, this was all done through them and through the, through the process,
Done?
Yes, thanks.
Alderman Bikavich?
Uh, just one last thing I'd like to point out because it is a la, a rather large vendor report and the amount is almost 2.6 mil. 1.6 mil of that covers the city hall, library, and fire station partial payments.
And the final payment for the fire station to see the eye.
So, again, I just wanted to point that out, that there is a lot of new development within this report.
Okay, thanks for that information. Any other questions? Motion?
Gale will move to approve the vendor summary report in the amount of $2,622,282.28.
Guzekowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bikavich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item nine is a motion to accept the 2016 budget guidelines as recommended by the finance committee. Bridgette?
Every year, the finance committee has been going through a process of talking about, discussing, and establishing some recommended budget guidelines that helps staff work with the departments and decide which direction we are going in terms of the budget for the upcoming year. So, it is that time again. The finance committee reviewed it at their last meeting on Friday. We quickly turned it around to get it in front of you tonight so that you could have some input if you so choose on the guidelines that are included in the report. The guidelines are virtually the same as what we had for 2015. We are, you know, in an ongoing state of looking at ways to save money, looking at ways to discover revenue, looking at ways to consolidate any of our services, whether it's internally within the organization or externally with other organizations. We are looking at something potentially different this year. Normally, we've had things like our Wisconsin retirement rates increase or other items that have been out of our hands that have eaten up the new construction dollars that we've received from taxes. And we are hoping this year that with every, once all the other changes are netted out, that we will be able to allocate a portion of the estimated net new construction dollars, which we are estimating a little over 200,000 for 2016, that we can allocate a portion of those dollars to the departments based on their pro-rata share of the budget to help them decide if they need to put that into something, whether it be staffing or their operating costs that they have been holding the line on. So, with that, I am looking, we're looking for a recommendation as well as any comments or feedback if you would like that added to the list.
Questions or comments from the council? All right, happy with the guidelines, motion? Come on up.
I've got some questions. Bridgette, is this available?
It's on the city website right now as a part of this agenda packet.
But you don't have copies of the old report and the new report at the library like you did with the audit?
The, yeah, the old one, the 2015 is in the 2015 published budget, which is also on the city's website.
Okay, but the new budget isn't on...
The new budget isn't done. That's what we're working on right now, 2016. The 2015 budget is on the website.
Okay, I was not able to track it, that's why I'm asking. I saw it in February and then there's some lapses where you guys didn't meet or your minutes aren't up and, um, I think it was in maybe Mar, no, June. Did they tear it apart and say that they wanted to do some additions, some deletions, some substitutions? Or were you have that? Did you present?
It may have been a different document. This document went to the finance committee on Friday and that's the only time it has gone in 2015.
This is not the three-year?
This is not the three-year. The three-year has been vetted by the finance committee twice in 2015 and recommended and approved by the common council already. Last month, I believe.
What is this?
It is simply guidelines that the finance committee meets. They talk about, talk about direction for the budget and then once the finance committee has talked and decided some of the guidelines to focus the budget on, it comes to the common council for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Timothy Grabowski again. It's always positive when you, uh, hear that departments are, you know, definitely trying to cut corners, hold the line on spending. So, from the public's perspective, that's always very much appreciated. My first question is, and I fully understand that this is just budgetary guidelines, but my first question is, what is the City of Oak Creek's bond rate total debt? I'd like to get that out there now prior to when we get to the budget hearings. Is there a definitive number out there that we can get at this point, inclusive of the TIF districts?
You said bond rate, were...
Well, the, the bond total debt. So, that would be inclusive of Drexel Town Square, Oakview Business Park, Lake Vista, or a rough number?
It's in on the, the website, whether it be in the final audit that just went up. It's also in the official statements that are also posted and public. And our total outstanding debt right now is 89 million.
Okay, 89 million, okay.
Which, again, we have 40% additional capacity based on the state regulations.
Okay.
Jerry would like to say something.
City administrator?
If you'd really like to get into the detail of that, you can look at the official statements that the city actually puts on its website. It's probably 150 pages of detailed financial information that goes through not only the city debt, but the entire debt in the community, whether it's the school district or MMSD. And it's all specified in significant detail there.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
So, there's lots, lots and lots of information.
Oh, sure. No, no, I get it. I just wanna make sure that we've got a rough number. Second question is, how much does the City of Oak Creek receive in tax revenue from the Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility per year?
Just one, how was that relevant to the discussion?
Well, because I want for the public, but also for the council that aren't aware of that, to know that the Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility does in fact pay in.
They do, yes.
So, possibly you could answer that question, Mayor. Do you know what the cost is?
The payment or the cost?
Well, the total of what the Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility pays in.
I don't know off the top of my head, do you know?
1.58.
Okay, I had it at 1.6 mil, so roughly close.
It's been reduced. We took an $87,000 hit in 2014 due to assessment changes and we will continue at the 5.8 number 2015 and potentially 2016.
Okay, and then my next question, my last question is, how will this affect or impact the taxpayers? If you're looking at roughly, my numbers were actually higher than the 89 million and then you're looking at also with the school district of roughly 100 million, you're looking at relatively close to, what, 200 million? So, I would assume that the impact on the taxpayers will be, um, significant.
I cannot speak for the school district as...
I understand, Bridgette.
We here are the city. It has been through the common council numerous times, the number of plans that we have for funding. We have an $850,000 portion of our tax levy that is attributed to debt. It has been that way since the 1990s. That 850 has not increased and has zero plan to increase based upon the debt that we currently hold that we have here in front of us. So, we have long-term plan, we have various backup sources, whether it's with the development agreements and any of those items that are in place. The common council has approved all of these plans and there is no chance for this to be going on to the taxes to have any change or any difference to the residents.
Okay, and just finally, just touching on that, should the increment value not be met, let's say whether it would be Drexel Town Square, Oakview Business Park, how does this council address plugging those holes?
They have already addressed how to plug those holes via every development agreement that they have in place, whether it be with WisPark, with the individual developers, and with the, um, the Power of the Future funds.
Right, I, I believe that the council has put a plan in place to adequately address the future debt of the city. We could propose a lot of what-ifs or dire forecasts about the economy, but we're not in the, in that kind of a business here. We can only do what's in front of us. All of the projects that were laid out for the city were vetted at public hearings and every kind of a, a meeting opportunity that we've had, the councils discussed them for the five years that I've been a part of the council, two as alderman and, or three as alderman, three as mayor, six years. I think we have a good plan in place. I believe when I, when I hear the finance director says that nothing's changed, we're still in a strong position. The audits show that. Certainly, the, uh, the credibility of the city is as strong as it's ever been because we continue to see significant investment in the city. So, that would be my answer for the what-ifs. We are putting ourselves in the best position for success in the future and I think we've addressed what we can address.
Okay, and will there be an opportunity prior to the, the public budget hearing, you know, half an hour before? But has the city ever looked at having a workshop or some type of a public session, could be the last Tuesday of a month, where the public is invited? I know that there's been discussion over the years, but I think that it's come to the point where it would behoove this council to allow the residents and the taxpayers of this community the opportunity to share their ideas, possibly some goals that may not have been reached yet. You know, you may even find it surprising that many of us do appreciate the city moving forward. It's obviously the question of, do we have the dollars? Can we meet the increment value? But I think that it's something on a positive note and I hope that Alderman will embrace that to give the public the opportunity to speak to that. Thank you.
Yeah, and of course, the public's welcome at the, at the budget meetings as long as they're open, so.
All right, thank you.
Our, our budget workshops with the common council are published. They are public meetings. The last two years or three years, we've actually held them on Saturday mornings and have gone until we've gotten through all of the material there. So, they're posted on the normal locations. Public are invited to share, to hear, to be a part of that discussion. Most of the time, public doesn't end up coming, but that is out there. It is the opportunity in mid-October, correct? Just one final statement that I would like to say on the what-ifs. Jerry, myself, Paul Thompson, every time we go and do more bond issuances, we have phone call with Moody's. On the beginning of all of this development stuff, those are normally 30-minute phone calls. They were hours because Moody's wanted to go through every potential what-if scenario they could think up and they went through it. And they have all the agreements, they have all the backup. They know what, if something goes bad, here kicks in Plan A. Okay, now we're at Plan B. What's your Plan C? They have all of that. They have assured that and that is also why they have held our bond rating firm at the AA2.
Okay. Rosemary?
I'm concerned with Moody's when you did these what-ifs. What if we lose 1.5 mil off?
Okay, I'm not, we're not gonna go there. This is not on the...
Yeah, we need to go there. Because I need to know that when you guys continue to increase our spending and our debt, that we're covered and we aren't gonna hit it with our taxes.
We could propose a million what-ifs.
Well, she just said that you went through it, so let's see what the answer is.
No, Moody's requested that. That's something that they requested of us.
What did Moody's say?
Well, she just told you what they said and that, that's...
No, she didn't. She said you went through a lot of...
Plan and in all of our documents.
So, did Moody's discuss if we lost 1.5 mil of our public shared utility revenue, where we're gonna get that 1.5 to pay the bills without raising taxes?
They've discovered and researched the legal documents and they are confident that that will not happen.
Okay, thanks for the question. Any other council comments? Motion on nine.
Can I ask another question and can I ask Melissa?
As long as it's not a what-if question. And it sticks to this agenda item, yes. And the city attorney will determine if it sticks to the agenda item.
Well, the last city attorney...
We're dealing with Melissa.
All right.
Okay.
How do I phrase this without including Mr. Haskins?
How does it relate to the 2016 budget guidelines, Rosemary?
We won't.
All right. Thank you. Motion on nine.
Gale will move to accept the 2016 budget guidelines as recommended by the finance committee.
Toman will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bikavich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
All right, item 10, a motion to consider resolution number 11624-081815. It's a resolution designating the park area at Drexel Town Square. This came up at the, two meetings ago, I believe, or the last meeting. Two meetings ago, there was a request or actually an ask by one of our city employees, not an elected, to designate the park after former mayor Dale Richards. And the Parks and Recreation and Forestry Commission wanted a, a shot at it, which I received last Thursday, attended the meeting, spoke my piece, heard some good input from them, much of which I think is included on the attachment that they, somebody placed on our, in front of us tonight. I'll just quickly say, I'm generally not in favor of naming things after mayors. Certainly, Arthur Abenshine deserved it because he essentially founded the city and served nine terms as mayor and if anybody ever deserved it, he did. I would just say this about naming things after people. Some of the suggestions the Parks and Forestry Commission had was to have a community contest. I would never put a elected or not elected in the position of making it a popularity contest because I think that disrespects the, the office. I'll, I'll make this point for, in favor of naming it after Dale Richards and the council will do what the council does. He was a well-respected mayor. He served, he and serves on the Water Utility Commission to this day and does a terrific job there. He worked on the site where this park is located for many years in a leadership position. Those three things, I think, made the request by one of our employees, I think worthwhile and something that should have been considered for those three things that he did for our city and continues to do today. So, at this point, I'll hand it over to the council and, and like to hear your thoughts. Alderman Bikavich?
Well, I'll weigh in on it. I was not at the August 13th meeting for Park and Recs.
Well, I'll weigh in on it, I was not at the August 13th meeting for Park and Recs, I was out of town, but we had one earlier in the summer, I want to say June, July, where it was brought up and the parks, Park Commission basically got the recommendation handed to them from within the city by the employee or wherever it came from. The Park and Recs Commission really felt not so much as a contest, but that the Park and Recs Commission would come up with three to five names, something that was palatable for the city and include the public in the naming of it, so to speak. They felt that more discussion was needed as to what criteria may be, if parks should be named after a particular person, a particular thing, things of that nature. We do have some parks, as the mayor alluded to, named after individuals and we also have Henry Meyer Park, I believe it is, over here.
Miller Park.
Miller Park. And again, I don't know the history of that. But anyhow, going forward, they felt that it was more appropriate to name amenities such as walking trails, baseball diamonds, et cetera, within a park, be better suited to honor a person or name it after an individual. Some of the, some of the names they put out for the, this is specifically the Drexel Town Square wetlands area that they had put forward was Drexel Town Square Preserve, AC Delco Preserve, Oak Creek Community Preserve and Emerald Preserve. It being a wetlands, they felt it's more, more of a preserve than a park with a designated walking trail for the Dale Richards walking trails. I myself, you know, Drexel, Drexel Town Square is a huge endeavor, we've been talking about it for a number of years. There are many individuals and many actions that led to this whole development coming forward. You can go back to the power plant negotiations, to the interchange going in. There's just numerous factors that led us to the point we are and numerous people that did it. I think it took a community to get it done and again, I'd like to see it honored within a community. I think the recommendation that they came up with on last Thursday was very good, I applaud the work that Park and Recs did. So, that is my two cents on it.
Other comment from the council? Alderman, Gail?
I work with Dale on the Water and Sewer Utility Commission and, and given the background there and my ongoing respect for, for what he's done for the city, when he continues to do for the city and especially in his work on the Power of the Future agreement, I think it's highly appropriate to consider him for, for the naming, naming resolution at the, at the park, at the new parkland at Drexel Town Square. I think these in general, I've come and trying to figure out a policy to deal with these things, I think that are typically one-offs and very idiosyncratic to certain projects or portions of the city, I think is probably somewhat futile. I think they always are probably, every park or new park is gonna be kinda, almost lend itself to a logical extension. I think Dale's involvement here is highly indicative of that. I'm firmly in, in the support of naming it after Dale in terms of his community involvement and his, his impact on the, on the community as a whole over time.
Alderman Verhalen?
I, I think myself, I would tend to agree with Alderman Bukavich on this one. You know, there's certain people that, that helped create the city that, that at one point in time deserved to have something of this magnitude named for them. And I don't dispute the number of years and whatnot that Mr. Richards served the city, worked at AC Delco, but you know, I think it's more fitting to name the area after what it, what it really is. It's, it's Drexel Town Square, it's the city town square. I think it's more appropriate to name amenities within that thing for, for people that actually put time in and, and did things to get us to that point. There may be some point in time where there may be some other amenities put in there, whether it's, you know, some type of recreational things as well as the trail and, and you know, I think that at that point in time, other people that put time and effort into this thing maybe could be honored as well. So that's my take on it.
Thank you, other comments? City administrator?
But the alarms that you hear going off, those are the weather alarms that we have, so I know there's been tornado warnings all day. So the public may not hear that at home, but I know you do, those are our weather alarms, we've got those in various departments, so.
Thanks for that. Any other discussion from the council, other than, if I don't have any discussion, I need a motion. Alderman Kirkowski?
I just want to add to what's been said, I agree, amenities can be named after an individual and the, the park should be a preserve and my two cents is the, the shorter name, the better, that's it, thank you.
Yeah, is there anyone that wants to make a motion? Alderman Bukavich?
I guess I want to be clear on what the motion is, it's a resolu-
To designate the park area something. Either one of these names, a name of your choosing, a name that's been suggested previously.
Well, again, I, I have
I don't want to send it back to the parks
No, I, I have my feelings on it and out of the four, I have a preference, but again, it may not be the preference of the majority here and I think we'd have to go through it again and I, I don't want to do some kind of straw poll, so I'll put the motion out there. Bukavich will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11624-081815, a resolution designating the park area at Drexel Town Square, Emerald Preserve with the trail system naming, honoring Dale Richards as the Dale Richards Trails.
And I assume you're, you're taking Emerald based on the residential next door?
I am taking it based on the, yes, the residential development going in next door.
So it's called Emerald, it would be called if it passes, Emerald Preserve and then the Dale Richards Trail?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the motion on the floor.
Kirkowski would second that motion.
Kirkowski seconds, roll call?
Alderman Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
No.
Guzekowski?
No.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes, thanks for the consideration on that. Moving to treasure
Rick gonna help pay for it now or not?
Yeah, yeah, free advertising. Alright, moving to treasure items, item 11 is our consideration of legislation number 11637-081815, a resolution rescinding resolution number 11424-110513 and restating the policy on handling of delinquent personal property taxes for the city of Oak Creek. We have our outstanding treasurer here to speak to this issue.
Okay, as you mentioned, it's the delinquent personal property tax policy. Just a couple of things to mention, I try to make things as easy and efficient as possible as things change. There's not really a lot of major changes in this. One of the things that I did is I kinda went through it this year, since before I started, the resolution and the policy have all been one document and I've just seen in, in so many other things that you would have a separate resolution from a policy. So that, one thing that I did here separated the two. With that, some of the language had to be changed to recognize that they were two separate documents. I just included some state statute references, just to kinda make it easier for people who are looking at the document to know where it comes from. As far as the policy goes, there's really only two major changes. One was changing the date that we normally would turn the delinquent personal property over to a collection agency from March 31st to July 31st. One of the reasons I'd like to do that is it's been kind of a headache, Bridgette can attest to that. We have two different software systems that we use, one for taxes, one for everything else. We have different bank accounts for taxes as to everything else. It's been very time-consuming when we're still collecting real estate taxes and then personal property taxes are now going into a different account than the real estate, it's just, it's kind of an accounting nightmare. So, that's my reason for doing that. I don't really see any sort of financial impact to that. Anything we collect between those times, we keep the entire amount versus a collection agency anyway, so it's only a few months. The other change I have bulleted on here is changing how it reads for when we do the publication and write-offs. It's a, it currently says as of October 1, I'd like to change it to by the following June 1. That as of October 1 was a little confusing anyway because it really doesn't say which October 1, the one in the current tax year or the following one. This just kinda clarifies it, it really was the following October 1, so we're kind of moving this up anyway. And that'll make it easier because we're doing other calculations that time of year that have to do with delinquent personal taxes, personal property taxes. We just already have our numbers together rather than waiting until October and everything changes, so.
Okay, thank you, questions for the treasurer? Alderman Bukavich?
Barb, not really what the changes, but actually on the collection process, do the private agencies have the ability to put liens against the property or anything of that nature?
Do we?
No, do the private companies, do they have that power?
I'm not sure.
To collect personal, they don't.
It's the businesses that own, that owe the personal property tax?
Do they have any, any recourse to put liens against them, anything like that, or do they just hassle them for the money?
Are you talking about our collection agency? No, they can't put a lien against personal property, they cannot. There could be a judgment brought to court, which we've done, Melissa's has been part of that, some of that usually, usually does go through the collection agency. And I have actually seen it, like if a business goes to try to sell later, that that has come up and it, and they've actually paid based on that. But we can't, no, you can't really put a lien against personal property per se.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion?
Gail, move to approve resolution 11637-081815, a resolution rescinding resolution number 11424-110513 and restating the policy on handling of delinquent personal property taxes for the city of Oak Creek.
Kirkowski will second.
Roll call?
Alderman Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
And Barb, you can jump into 12.
Yep, still me. Okay, another policy change here for the internal control policy on cash handling and receipting for the city of Oak Creek. We usually, as a finance committee, go through this every year. We had last done it, let's see, back in November of last year. Normally, it would be a little bit later in the year, but because some of the things that are, are coming up with the move of the new city hall, some of the new software, we now have a supervisor and statutory changes which relate to the division between municipal court and police, which I know has been a number of years, but they are now starting to split off some of the duties that police has been doing for court. So that really kinda required some of the changes in the policy. I had attached the resolution and the policy as well as what we went through as finance committee, which is rather lengthy. I would assume you don't want me to go through every single bullet point, a lot of it is, is simple word-changing based on what I just described. Couple of the bullet points that are probably a little more main. Under the second section where it says cash receipts, I'll just point out the second bullet where it says number eight, changes the delivery and process of decentralized department money to flow through the administrative assistant supervisor who oversees the administrative support assistants. Now that we have a supervisor, before this was kinda named as whoever we approve. I, I really feel with that, that person in that position, they're gonna be overseeing those who are taking in the money as administrators, administrative assistants. It just seemed to be more efficient than to, you know, expect the coroner eye to come down or deputy come down with all of these individual things. We have, with the internal controls that are in place, it's, I feel is still good internal controls, even having that supervisor watch over that. Like I said, a lot of it's just related to those, to the administrative support supervisor, just some of the, the voids, same thing, allowing that supervisor to do some of that overseeing. And then under decentralized collections, again, just adding municipal court is separate from police. I don't know if there's really anything else that anybody here would like to, me to elaborate on, or any questions?
I don't see any from the council, I have one in the audience. Go ahead, Mr. Dignor.
Arden Dignor, 8540 South Pennsylvania, I glanced over this list and I was, at first glance, I thought, ah, all these fees that are being charged by the fire department for inspection, for all the inspectors, for all these, that they don't, are unable to collect them now because they're not, don't have a cash box? And the fact is, I had thought, I heard that this new half, quarter million dollar computer system we had would allow the inspectors to collect the money and give certificates right in the vehicle. Now, but apparently this new system, I, I don't understand that, that they allow that type of payment. So are we going to eliminate and save money by eliminating all these fees? Oh, never, never, how are you gonna handle that?
Okay, I think that's kind of a two-point question, if I'm understanding you, Arden, that as far as the fees collected by the fire department, they're still not going to be collecting fees at the fire department, that still will come through the, the city hall.
Well, if that's the case, then if a person is, if a business is in shaky financial status and, and they're, the fire department makes an inspection, charges them the fee, then they're stuck on this big, long list of delinquent property, right?
If you're referring to the item before this, that was
Yes, yes, yes.
That was delinquent personal property tax.
It's not fees or?
No, that's your personal property tax, so taxes that people pay on items that they have in their business such as tables, cabinets, machinery, that kind of stuff.
Well, someone has to be charged for the, for the taxes on the property itself though, and so that, my, my question is, how will you handle these fees when we come in and ask for a permit to, to add a couple of electrical outlets or, or some plumbing device like a water heater in our home? Who do we pay?
Does this have anything to do with the agenda item we're talking about?
You'll still be paying through city hall just like you are now, or online. We are working on credit card payments, if that's what you're referring to with the software, some of the software changes.
So you're gonna eliminate all kinds of payments and you have to have a credit card? I don't have any.
No, you don't have to have a credit card.
Well, then will I have to go to the treasurer's office to make those kind of payments?
You'll come to city hall, it'll be at the front counter at, at the new city hall. I mean, right now, you come to city hall.
Because the inspection fees are determined by the inspection
This is turning, you can ask all these questions of the city treasurer.
Yeah, but I
This has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
Yes, it does.
No, it doesn't.
Because if they don't have, if they're unable to pay at, at the place, what kind of a mech emotions do citizens have to go through to get these permits from the, from the department?
Arden, you will still be, you will still come to city hall to get your permits or whatever you need and you will still pay at city hall.
They will accept the money?
Yes.
At the, at the spot?
Yes.
Oh, that's, that sounds encouraging.
Alright, Alderman Verhalen?
Just a little bit of follow-up, I, I had some questions on item number 12 this morning, I came into the treasurer's office and we went through some of the things I had questions about. We kinda went through the, the changes and protocols and stuff and she reassured me that everything that was being done was things that were necessary and prudent and I'm pretty satisfied, she took enough time out of her busy schedule to, to work the things through for me and any questions I had, but I'm, I'm pretty confident that we got all the bases covered on this. questions I had, but I'm pretty confident that we got all the bases covered on this one.
Good. City administrator, briefly.
Just want to make a comment. Barb does a really good job. She's very conscientious and diligent on this and is a good custodian of the public's money. And that's really what we're talking about, is making sure that the public's money, we have proper procedures to make sure that that's being protected. And I can say she does a very, very good job. She's very conscientious and very detail-oriented. So that's the kind of person you want in that position, and Barb does a nice job with that.
Couldn't agree more. Motion on 12.
Gail will move to approve Resolution 11638-081815, a resolution rescinding Resolution Number 11559-111814, and restating the internal control policy on cash handling and receipting for the City of Oak Creek.
Verhaelen, seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukovic.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Moving to engineering. Mike, I'll let you handle on 13.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in our meeting of May 5th of this year, we were authorized to begin negotiations for right-of-way acquisitions needed for the Fifth Avenue relocation project. And so since that time, our consultant has been working with our design engineer, Matt Sullivan, in that endeavor. And there are two agreed-upon offers that property owners have signed. And so we're looking for authorization to complete those transactions. And so basically, what you see on the screen before you is the 11 properties that are affected by either straight-up fee simple right-of-way acquisition or temporary limited easements, which usually would mean side slope grading. And there's also some permanent limited easements, which are for vision corner easements. And so basically, that's what you see here. The hatched area are the affected properties. The green, the two green parcels up at the far north end on the west side of Fifth Avenue are the subject of tonight's authorization. The northernmost one is a sliver of actually city property. And the process that we go through requires that the check be cut, the transaction be documented. And so we're basically writing a check to ourselves for this one. That's a temporary limited easement. Right, this is the far south end of the property that the water utility sits upon. And then this vacant parcel, this one acre parcel here at the northwest corner of Fifth and Old Ryan Road, which is going to be a detention pond to handle stormwater for the project. So basically, looking for authorization to complete those transactions. And I guess I also like to report that we're making good progress on basically all of the other parcels here. So we expect those to move along to completion here in the coming weeks.
Okay. Questions? Alderman Toman.
Mike, is parcel number two, is that sightline or easement property for the road? What is?
That is sightline. That is a vision triangle.
Okay.
This is, because this right here, I should be more clear here, this is the Union Pacific Railroad.
Okay.
So this will be an at-grade crossing, so that's why you see the vision corner basically at all four of these corners, that those remain open for clear view of oncoming trains and, of course, vehicles.
Okay. And how about seven? What is seven there?
Seven is one individual property that when this, when Ryan Road gets discontinued, it is going to be completed in a turnaround cul-de-sac. That's going to, kind of an offset cul-de-sac, that's going to lie upon that property. And then some grading to get down to existing grade, leaving really nothing for a usable parcel. So basically, it was acquiring the whole parcel.
Okay, so we don't need anything on the north side of East Ryan Road, parallel to that seven?
Correct. We need nothing there.
Okay. All right. Is number two going to get donated?
I guess I don't have anything specific to report. I'd have to, I can try to get back to that.
All right. That would be cool. Thank you.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Just a question on the Baller property. I'm not real familiar with that property, but I know through the years, that thing was land-filled quite extensively to bring it up to the road grade there. And I was wondering if the city took it upon themselves to do any soil testing or anything over there before we acquired it for any contaminants? That's the only question I had. And if there is anything there, who's responsible for the cleanup?
That's a good question. I don't have the answer for you. I could tell you that there was extensive testing required throughout this process since we are using federal funds through the state's funding process. So I know there was environmental testing. Specifically, what was looked at on that parcel, I'd have to check and give.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is because when you said stormwater detention, I mean, that thing's got to come up pretty cleaner. We're going to run into all kinds of problems there.
I know that there was at least a geotechnical analysis done so that, you know, it is feasible that this is a parcel that can, you know, can handle the stormwater, be line, clay liner, and perform as expected.
All right. Just wondering if you could maybe give us a little follow-up on if there was environmental stuff done on that thing?
Absolutely, will do.
Yep.
Any other questions? Alderman Guzakowski.
Mike or Jerry, just in general, what are we looking at for the total dollar amounts that we'd be spending on these estimated properties?
About $800,000, which is about what our budget is. So things are proceeding pretty good. As Mike reported, and I talked with Matt Sullivan as well, that's what our estimates are, and we're proceeding pretty well with the negotiations. Total projects north of $4 million with construction and everything else. So I think it's $4.5 million, and I think the property's about $800,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion?
Toman will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 11640, acquiring fee property right-of-way permanent easements, temporary easements, and highway easements for the South Fifth Avenue relocation project from the intersection of State Highway 100, Ryan, State Highway 32, Chicago, to Fifth Avenue/Ryan Road, and to send a payment in the amount of the award of damages to the affected property owners. Project Number 12026.
Guzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukovic.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 14 is a traffic and safety recommendation. Chair of the traffic and safety?
I'm not the chairman of traffic and safety, but I will certainly discuss this.
Matt Sullivan is, but I'm on traffic and safety. I guess I can take it from here. I'm kind of confused on where this was supposed to go, but Alderman Kerkowski had some suggestions here as far as the no-left-turn sign as to its position. At traffic and safety, we instructed streets to see if they could move the sign from its present position, because there is an existing sign there, but it's not a city sign, so they couldn't enforce what the sign, what the sign had on it, which was no-left-turn. The sign did stay on its present position, so we're just changing a new sign, exchanging the signs is what we're all, we're doing.
Same location, new sign?
The location is staying the same. It's still on private property because there was issues with some of the neighbors as to where they would be satisfied with it. It went through traffic and safety with the neighbors not having any issues with it. Alderman Kerkowski suggested we put something to affect underneath the sign, initially put in addition to the sign as far as it saying that this sign will be enforced by the Oak Creek Police Department, since the Alderman couldn't because it was a private sign. But that's something I think that has to be added at the traffic and safety later on. Otherwise, I'd like to see this move forward.
Okay, any other comments? Alderman Bukovic?
Again, I'll fully support it for what it's worth with the sign. I don't know how well people will obey this coming out. We went over this boots issue before. Personally, I would like to just see the road barricaded and not being used there because it's a private road and try to eliminate that for the neighbors, but I'm comfortable with this.
Alderman Kerkowski?
Briefly, I did have a discussion before the meeting with Alderman Verhaelen about this, and I talked to the city attorney. She's going to just check into my, the question I had. So the additional sign is not on the table tonight. We're just going to deal with this placement of this sign for now, so no problems.
Okay, Alderman Gail.
For Melissa, just if it's still on private property, how do we enforce it? Is it because it's our property as a sign now, or how is it now enforceable where it's not previously?
The other, I can answer that, I guess.
Alderman Verhaelen?
Sorry. The previous sign was put up by the owner of the establishment. And if it's something that a private owner puts up, it's not something that the city put up, so you can't enforce it. Now it's a city sign, so whatever.
So by official action, replacing it there makes it legal?
Right.
All right, cool. And they can enforce it.
Is that your take on it? Yeah?
It is.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Motion?
Guzikowski will accept the motion to concur with the recommendations of the Traffic and Safety Commission to approve the installation of the no-left-turn with a sign at West Hilltop Lane at the driveway of 9,000 South 27th Street.
Verhaelen, second.
Go ahead. You're good. All right, sorry.
Verhaelen, seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukovic.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And last thing for engineering. Mike, number 15.
This is a bit of a continuation on the topic that was discussed a little bit earlier, and this is that the utilities and road extension, 20th Street north of Drexel Avenue, which will immediately serve the school property and ultimately serve all the developing property north of Drexel between 27th Street and I-94. And basically, R.A. Smith worked under a previous contract with the city to go through the alternative process, investigation process, and secure the wetland permit through the Department of Natural Resources. And that is, with the payment that was approved earlier, will finalize that process, and then in an expedited process, continue on with the design of the utilities and the road under a very, very strict schedule that everybody's trying to meet. So R.A. Smith is very familiar with the project and involves sand, sewer, water, main, stormwater for the road, compensating floodplain. And R.A. Smith is intimately aware of the requirements and the modeling for all the floodways through the city, because they've been handling that for many years for us. So we feel that we can get a good design from them in fairly short order. And so the recommendation is to, is to award this contract approaching $55,000 for that design.
Alderman Verhaelen?
Just a little backup for everybody in the room here, since I'm on the school board. To say that the schedule for the grade school over there is under a tight schedule is really an understatement. And I guess my first question to maybe Jerry or Mike would be, is there going to be a temporary access put in there in lieu of anything that resembles a road so we can get going with great site grading and whatnot?
Yes, yeah. There is a temporary roadway that is a couple of properties to the, to the east of where this road is going to go. Gravel Road has been put in there, and so they've been accessing, they've been grading already, and they have approvals for the footing and foundation. So that is well underway, and they should be able to continue to use that access as this roadway gets, the design gets underway and finished, basically, and utilized even while that road is being constructed.
The reason I did bring it, or did comment on it saying, is just so everybody in the room is kind of up to par on how tight this really is for the school district. Completion date for that school, if everything goes according to plan, is August 21st of next year. And that gives us a move-in date of August 22nd to August 26th, and school starts the next week. Just so everyone here knows how tight the schedule really is, so everything's got to move along. It's got to be expedited anywhere we can do it. So just so everyone's aware of it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Motion?
Bukovic will make a motion to enter into a contract with R.A. Smith National, Inc., for the final design of South 20th Street extension north of West Drexel Avenue for an estimated contract total of $54,800. Project Number 15023.
Guzikowski, seconds.
Guzakowski, seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukovic.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Ken, would you take 16, please?
Sure. Doug, sorry, 16, it's a resolution to consider approving a certified survey map for the property at 8040 South 6th Street.
Thanks, Alfred. First of several CSMs on the docket this evening. This deal is with the property in Drexel Town Square. This would create the right-of-way for Market Street as well as creating the ancillary parcel for, that the city owns west of, to the east of Market Street and the east of City Hall Library, which would create this parcel for future sale. And I think Jerry just wanted to have a very brief discussion with you about disposition of that parcel. So with that, Jerry?
Sorry, Jerry.
So as Doug said, this is going to be a CSM that'll split this out. If you remember, we previously had had the City Hall kind of spanned out to the east. Part of the council discussion was to make sure that we make that site more compact so we could have another development site. We have that site pegged on our TIF plan for about $3.9 million in taxable value. So we're in the process of, Doug and I, of putting a proposal to sell that lot out there. And the question to the council would be, who would you want to have review that request for bids or request for proposal? And I can see three different, I can see the council, I can see the planning commission, I can see the CDA. What do you, how do you, how do you want to see that when that comes back? We're going to develop a proposal to sell that site. We're going to identify some uses that we think are appropriate, and just wondering how you want that process to proceed.
Jerry, you want people to get back to you informally on that? Because it really, we're not part of the agenda, unfortunately, on that, so.
We can do that another time if you want.
Yeah.
But be thinking about that, then.
No, so what, in fact, you want council to consider?
It would be the CSM. There's a motion to approve the CSM that would actually split the property. We'll come back subsequently to how you want to proceed with getting that property to sell.
Okay. So Doug, other than the, what we have in front of us on the design of Market Street or the location of Market Street is pretty standard?
Yeah, those are actually all fixed. It's just that this formally dedicates that right-of-way also formally creates that lot. The positions of those and the design of those has been set for some time.
All right. Where are we at, Ken?
We're up for questions on the.
On 16, Alderman Toman.
We're splitting it in two?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, you mentioned, or Jerry mentioned potential users of that, okay? So is there potential to reconfigure that later based on the use? I mean, I guess, I don't know, are we splitting it before we know what we really want?
No, the configuration of Lot 2 is set given the right-of-way for Market Street. I mean, what happens, interior to Lot 2 could be reconfigured, but not, the exterior boundaries are set and those will not change.
Okay.
Doug, could you put the last slide back? Maybe, just to make sure that people know for sure, we're not, yeah. So the lime green lot is what we're, yeah. So nothing's being split in two on that lot?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Gotcha.
Other questions? Motion on 16?
Bukovic will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 11632-081815, approving a certified survey map for the property at 8040 South 6th Street, tax key number 8139034.
Gail, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavitch.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
17, Doug?
Thank you. The next three CSMs all deal with the Oakview Business Park, the first of which creates Lot 1, which is essentially at the intersection of Howell Avenue and Oakwood Road, creates that Lot 1, also creates an outlot for stormwater management purposes.
Okay. Questions? Motion?
Gail, move to approve resolution 11633-081815, approving a certified survey map for the property at 10304 South Oakview Parkway.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bukavitch. Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavitch.
Aye.
18?
Thank you. Next CSM also in the Oakview Business Park creates Lot 3 and Lot 2, which would be available for future development and future reconfiguration based on the actual clients that would be purchasing those lots. Also creates the outlot for stormwater management purposes.
Questions on that one? Motion?
Gail, move to approve resolution 11634-081815, approving a certified survey map for the property at 10551 South Oakview Parkway.
Kirkowski, a second.
Kirkowski, seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavitch.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Thank you. The final CSM for this evening, also within Oakview Business Park. Again, creates a lot, billable lot being Lot 2, Lots 1 and Lots 2. Again, Lot 1, maybe we can figure it... We can figure it at a later date based on the needs of the individual purchasers. Also creates Lot 1, which would be made possible for addition to Marty Ann Park at some future date.
Any questions for Doug on that one?
Doug, can you just... Can you remind me, the kind of dashed line you see diagonally around through there? That's the utility corridor? It's a kind of a faint, narrow... There you go. It's kind of an S-shaped line, Doug, that runs...
Referring to...
Yeah, right there.
Yep. That's... That does follow the... Maybe, Mike, can you address that a little bit? But that does follow the infrastructure that's in there, and the easements for the...
That's correct. It's looking at this as labeled as the water main easement, 20-foot-wide water main easement.
Is that it, Ken?
Yep.
Motion?
Gail, move to approve resolution 11635-081815, approving a certified survey map for the property at 300 West Oakview Parkway.
Kirkowski, a second.
Kirkowski, seconds. Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.